Okay, thank you very much. So we are back in open session. We had an executive session for the purpose of talking about negotiations with with our teachers' union. And to begin the meeting as always by saying pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted in a hybrid approach. No in-person attendance. The public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. So thank you, everybody, for coming. And the first thing we're going to start with is if anybody has any -- actually, before we do anything, I think we're going to start with a quick moment of silence because North Reading, as many people know, we lost somebody that's been very involved in the schools and the town, Brad Jones, Sr., died this past week. And so we just want to take, you know, a moment to -- a moment of silence to recognize the many, 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 many hours that he devoted to this community. Thank you very much. And I'll be honest, like, I know Representative Jones a bit from his work in North Reading, but I never had the honor of meeting Brad Jones, Sr. So we're going to move on, and we're going to begin with the public input today. And so anybody that has a comment or a question about something that is not on the agenda today, please type in the chat, and we can unmute you. I don't see one right now, so we're going to go on to -- well, there's no student report, per se, but I will open it up. As Dr. Daley said, we have some of our great students that are here. I don't know if Chibi or Sophia, do you have any comments or any thoughts you would like to share today?
Yeah, I think Dr. Daley just wanted us to talk a little bit about how we're feeling for going back to school next week. So just like a couple of things. I think that we're all really excited, all the students. I've been talking to my friends, those who are staying home completely virtual and those who are going for hybrid. And I think reopening schools is definitely important, at least from our point of view, as long as it's being done safely, which I think it is. I'm sure it is. But after talking to, like, my friends and my peers, we're all very, very excited to go back in person and meet all of our new teachers and start classes again. I don't think, as of now, there are too, too many concerns on our end. It's mostly just excitement, a little bit of nerves, obviously, the classic back-to-school nerves added on top of the circumstances. But I think it's definitely important, and yeah, as of now, we're just mostly excited.
Thank you. Sophia?
Yeah, just like what Chibi was saying, a lot of us, my friends, my peers, we're all just so excited to get back in the classroom. And a lot of us are really excited to move away from the 100% virtual because just to get back into the in-person is really important for all of our education and experiences. So this method that we have just seems really reassuring.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Okay, we'll move on to continuing business. Dr. Daley, you want to do an update on the reopening?
Sure, thank you. So I just want to walk us through a few ideas here about our reopening. I wanted to start with the -- just reminder for the school calendar, the release days. So we have a slightly different calendar for the year. I did get a few questions, just to clarify, that the elementary schools have release days every Wednesday. I just want to make sure that's clear to everyone. What I sent out, that was hopefully helpful, I took -- we actually based it on the high school calendar, because their calendar is very complicated, with their green gold days. But we essentially have it every other week, switch for who's here on the Wednesdays, but it's not quite every other week, and there's some different factors there. For example, if there's a Monday holiday, we wouldn't have, if, you know, Cohort B was scheduled to be on Wednesday that week, instead of them going three and Cohort A going one, we might have A go on Wednesday that week. It balances out, I believe, with 17 and 16 throughout the year for A's and B's. So that worked out really well. That calendar is on our district calendar, so if you go to our district webpage and click on the center tab, calendar, the Google calendar, you can download it to your phone. You can be very easily up to date on what days are coming. Otherwise, it's pretty clean. Mondays and Tuesdays, Cohort A. Cohort C is coming every day. Thursdays and Fridays, Cohort B, and it's just the Wednesdays that alternate. So someone had said about the calendar also mentions some release days on Wednesdays, but that's for the other schools. So the high school and the middle school are full days, so the day before Thanksgiving, the day before the winter holiday break are our release days for everyone. I did keep in the elementary calendar, so that, you know, it does say elementary release, but that's just a reminder that those are conference days, which most likely be present. So those calendars are in there, and those are shared out. I just wanted to make sure that was clear and clarified, and I will follow up with communication of folks about that tomorrow to make sure that's clear. But we're very, very excited about our students returning to their destiny. I've been saying for days now, I just can't wait to see those buses pull up, kids come in, get into school. Just the energy and the excitement, and as I said in my opening letter, kids have never been more excited to come back to school. And staff have never been more excited to get back to doing what they do. And I think we've got to build on that energy and seize it, and I think everyone is very excited about doing that, but I can't wait to see our students go. Again, on that 17th, it's Cohort B and C that are coming in on the 17th. We do have some students visiting next week. They should have received orders from their principals about that schedule. That's a chance to come into the school in very small groups, to see the different entrances and exits, to meet some of the teachers again, to see some faces, and to know all the different entrances, exits. We have one-ways on the streets, which bathrooms are to be used, which hallways are to be used in the pass-through, and to have a little bit of an exploration of the building. We do have some students transitioning for the first time from elementary to middle, from middle to high, and to make sure that those students have that opportunity to explore the building a little bit without having all the students here that would be here on that first day. So those are scheduled for next week. We're very excited about that. The other thing I'm going to be sending out is information about our daily help screener. We've been doing that this week as a pilot with our staff. This is something that gets completed every morning. It's an electronic form. You can do it on your phone. A lot of our staff have staged it to their home screen, so it's almost like a tap, and they can just very quickly do that in the morning. It's just a few questions. If you're experiencing any symptoms, if you've been exposed to someone who's positive or close contact with somebody who's positive, if you yourself are positive, or if you've traveled to a state that's not on the low-risk state and now will be affected by the governor's travel plan. So that's the information that we just need to receive. This is not, and I'm going to be making this very clear, this is not a screening process that we're going through 3,000 of these every morning and catching people before they come in the building. That is an exhaustive task. What it does do is it helps us in our self-report. And so in addition to everyone being on the honor system, this is what we said is like the honor system plus. It does give you some pause, because as you answer those questions, if you do have any symptoms, you now are putting those symptoms in writing, and you're reaching out to the nurse and making contact. And it's certainly going to help us with contact tracing and with trying to find some information. So it's been very successful in the first week, and we're going to expand it. So that will be sent out to families tomorrow with that as well. We've also identified, and I think Mr. Buckley helped bring up during our meetings as we planned this, there are going to be students that have symptoms that are similar to COVID symptoms that are caused by a known condition, let's say asthma or allergies or something. What we're saying is, for the first time, indicate that you have those symptoms. You then work with the nurse, and the nurse will help you to understand that you don't need to be, you know, activating every single day and having a conversation with the nurse every day if it's still the result of those known causes, right? Which I think is pretty reasonable. We made it pretty easy to click no symptoms, no, no, no. It should take you 15 to 20 seconds to complete the form. And so students will be doing that or with their families. So that'll be something we share out. An update on remote learning assistance. This is something that we have talked about. We've been partnering with the town of North Reading, the Rec Department, and Lynn Clements in particular has been very, very hard at work on this. We've met in a small group with the town administrator, Mepo Goberno, Mr. Buckley, myself, Lynn Clements, Maureen Stevens, and we've been exploring different venues in town and different possibilities for having some remote learning assistance opportunities. And I know that they're hard at work for that, and I'm hoping that there's some communication coming soon, but there are many different challenges and many different requirements around this process. So it's still work in progress. I can report that people are putting in absolutely the best efforts to try to figure this out and make it happen, but then more information will be coming on that. At our schools, we are going to have before-school programs at the elementary schools and the middle school. We're also going to have our after-school program with the YMCA. That program information has gone out, and parents have received that as well. Just as a little update, too, we are going to be providing lunches to students. There's no -- lunch through December 31st is free of charge. We will have breakfast to students that's free of charge. And even on those elementary half-days, we're going to have a way for students to pick up a boxed lunch, take it with them on the bus. They can't eat on the buses, but they can take their lunch with them and have it as soon as they get home, which we think is a great opportunity. Even on those early half-days, for elementary students, they will get their lunch provided through the shift. I don't know if the day for that -- Yeah, one other update, Dr. Daley, on lunch. We're also going to have a grab-and-go lunch program for those students that are in the remote learning days. For those students that aren't in the in-person learning, we'll have the ability to come and pick up a grab-and-go lunch, I think breakfast for the next morning each day. That's going to happen between 11:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m., and it's going to happen out of the middle school and high school facility. Similar to what we were doing in the spring, the pickup location will be in the back park lot near the gymnasium, at the high school drop-off and pickup area. And we are working on some further communication that will probably go out either tomorrow or Monday to gauge interest in that program. We have that idea of company meals, two packets meals, we can wait, but we also plan on offering that as well.
Excellent. And Mr. Connolly, just one clarification, just to reiterate then. So for students that are in school, that are going to usually would buy lunch, there's no cost to it, they can just -- it's same as it normally would be, okay?
Yep. So the YMCA program has extended the free mail program that began last spring, remember the school closure, through, right now, through December of 2020. So as long as you're an enrolled North Reading student, those mails are free, so they won't be going to save the cash. And for now, to eliminate confusion, we deactivated the MySchoolArt online payment option, and will be reviewing that and getting closer to the end of that period, but that's correct.
If there were items that you could have purchased on top of that, are they just not going to be available right now?
So if they're just going to be available, it's a prepackaged breakfast, a lunch that means all the components of a nutritious meal. The à la carte option will be potentially very limited. Might be some availability at the high school, but that's probably not true right now.
Thank you.
I know that later in the agenda, we're going to talk about the NREA MO, Memorandum of Agreement. I do want to talk about teacher professional development. Mr. Peter Kane is the president of the NREA. I know was able to join the call, and he can only stay for a little while, so I wanted to make sure I took a moment to say while he's here, and perhaps Chibi has something to share as well. But I just wanted to thank him and make sure that the community understands how respectful and pleasant the negotiations were. I think that the teachers advocated for themselves and for all staff, as they should. Keep us in check, make sure that we work together. And I've said this many times, I feel that our school committee, our community, our parents, our teachers' association, and all of our staff are rowing in the same direction. We all want to do the right thing. We're working very hard. They asked good questions, and we gave good answers. And I think that at every step in this process, we came up with a reopening plan that was solid and safe and got as many people back as possible for as much time as possible. And so I wanted to publicly thank Mr. Kane again for that. And I don't know if anyone else wants to add to that, and if Mr. Kane has anything to share.
Yeah, Dr. Daley, I'll just chime in and agree. I thought that whole process was just about as collegial and, you know, as it could be, and all sides worked together very well. And so I certainly appreciate, and I think the community should appreciate the teachers' efforts in that area and stuff.
Yeah, and I'll jump in as well, and then I actually think we should jump ahead to the NREA memorandum first, just because Dr. G -- Mr. Kane is here. But I mean, I want to thank Peter in particular, but also the other teachers. There were a lot of people that gave a lot of time, you know, the vice president of the NREA, Sherry Carrigan, Shelley? Shelley Carrigan. And then there were a number of teachers, right, Mrs. Brennan and Buden and --
Lister.
Lister, Budden. You know, a lot of people gave their time to this, and, you know, and Michael Connolly and Dr. Daley, and there was a lot to go through, and a lot of people don't know what was in there. But, you know, I'll just give very simple things, like, teachers usually don't cover lunches and recess and things like that, and we need all hands on deck right now. And so the teachers never batted an eye to say they would help out in any way they could. And so, you know, it was just really helpful, like, people on the committee, off the committee, kept emailing me and texting me, is this really going to happen? Are we going to get there? And, you know, I'm just so lucky and so fortunate to be in this town where everybody pulled together, and, you know, we didn't -- some towns are tearing themselves apart, they're going to court over these things, and here we're just having conversations. And so it was really good to see, and so I appreciate the work that everybody put in. I think Dr. Daley did a tremendous job of leading those discussions, and we got through it without -- I don't think anybody stormed out, I don't think anyone raised their voices, I don't think there was ever any walking away from any virtual table. We all just, you know, had to come back every once in a while, get more information, and then, you know, move forward. So thank you, everybody. They're the ones that were in there.
Mr. Kane, was there anything you wanted to add before we?
No, I thought I would hop on tonight and just let you know that the general membership of the NREA has approved the memorandum of agreement, and we are willing to move forward with that. So I'm very pleased to announce that it has been approved. And as I've said before, I think it gives us a great foundation upon which we can build the beginning of our 2021 school year. And I recognize that it will be a year like no other, and I echo Mr. Buckley's comments, that the willingness that the educators have demonstrated to take on those tasks that are necessary while working together is the proof, I think, of the pride that we have in our profession, our ability to meet the challenges it can bring, and really our desire to see students, right? So hearing Chibi and Sophia talk about that tonight is just one more reminder of what it is we're doing all of this for, right? And I'm appreciative of the efforts of the Administrative Council, of Scott Buckley, of Rich McGowan, of Dr. Daley, but again, in particular, Rosie Brennan, Anne Marie Button, Shelley Carrigan, Carlo Lister, they worked tirelessly. They deserved considerable thanks for this. So I'm looking forward to the school year. I think we're off to a great start so far. I'm glad to see that y'all are also embracing the hybrid model. I hope you enjoy it as much as we do. But I think that what we have established in North Reading is worth mentioning, right? And it deserves some merit. So I appreciate all of you for what you've done, and I wish you all the best. So thanks very much.
Excellent. So I'm -- I'm supposed to wish you this. Did you want to move just to the other item, just to do that now?
Well, I mean, if you want to finish up the update, and then I'm just saying, I think we should vote on the memorandum while Peter's here, so that hears us, and then we can go to --
Sure. I think I can do that piece pretty quickly.
Okay.
So just an update, the teachers have been participating in professional development. It's gone in the first week with sort of an overview of school safety procedures and a lot with COVID safety updates. There's school nurses as well. We had a great presentation from a school physician, and our lead nurse that was prepared by all of our nurses. This week has been, our digital learning team has been outstanding, as well as a lot of teachers who volunteered to create presentations on all topics around hybrid education, digital learning, social emotional learning, social justice. We have so many great topics and presentations that have been done over this week. Next week, we're going to be continuing with our student visits and also having more professional development collaboration time for our teachers. All of those professional development opportunities have been recorded and archived, so that the teachers can go in and watch them on demand as well. So it's been very well received. I've been able to get around the middle high school, see people engaged in all their lessons, either individually in their rooms or in small groups spaced out, and participating, and it's been really some good feedback so far. We also have, our district-wide, our radar grant, if you recall, had one person that we hired that we split with multiple communities. She's offered PD for each school on a topic of universal design for learning and hybrid education. Those are outstanding presentations as well that I've presented. So that's been great. These 10 days have really been worth it for our staff to get them in the best place that we can possibly be for when our students start next week. Just very quickly, I wanted to give an overview, and we'll provide some more detail in the future on this, but Mr. McGowan had asked about some grants that we've received and how we spend them. I just want to put them all in one place and say, there was the Answer Fund Grant for $56,059.7, around that number. That provided us, we used that to get an additional school nurse who's working at all five schools, helping us with just day-to-day nursing activities, and also if there is any kind of contact tracing or checking into backgrounds or daily help screeners, that extra person has been incredible. And again, our nurse leader has been outstanding, and I just have to say, you know, from just coming in over the summer to look at the equipment, to make sure everything was working correctly, to helping me with our protocols and everything, she's really been great, Colleen Reska. We also have the Remote Learning Technology Essentials Grant that we qualified for. Wasn't quite what we put in for, but we got around $127.750 for that. That is going to allow us to move forward with the Chromebook devices for all of our students, K12, as well as internet access at home for those families that are having difficulty with internet access at home. So that's been great to receive. We also have the Coronavirus Relief Fund Grant that was closer, that was around $521,550. We've used that in many different ways, just, you know, Mr. Connolly did a lot of research here on just the state-of-the-art technology, and some of the, not all, but some of the top hospitals in Massachusetts. We found some things to add on to our state-of-the-art building here. We've also looked at staffing, building subs, technology technician now. We definitely need that with all of these devices in our district, some additional technology, teaching tools, sanitation supplies, for studio support, and HVAC supplies for the building. So that's been ongoing. There's some other funds as well, and there's, you know, we've worked with the town as well, but that was just an overview of those three grant funding sources. I know there was something to do with that. At this time, I think that's all for the reopening update. We might jump to number two, is that the idea?
Yeah, one quick question on the update. So the Chromebooks, I know they've been distributed to, at least I know six graders, because my son picked it up, but for the elementary, is the goal that when they come in and their visits, I think I saw their visits, if they come to the school on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, whenever it is, that when they're going to be getting their Chromebooks?
Yeah, the production downs have been outlining that. There's a slightly different process depending on what grade you're in and how you're using the device and what it looks like. Some of the devices do have the insurance option depending on the device, and some of the older devices, we're just doing it a slightly different way. And there's also some nuance to how we're going to distribute them and how the kids are going to use them. If they're in kindergarten, they're here every day, it's going to be different than in fourth grade and seventh grade. So we're going to work those out. So it's slightly different rollout, but each, every one of their individual grade levels would have been different. So it's a great step forward for us, going to prepare us well for any remote learning and honestly, in-person learning as well as we're using it. You know, we had our one-to-one when we were full in person as well. So it's going to be great to have those devices.
Any questions from the committee or anybody else? You want to, you can type questions in, or you can type your name if you'd like to speak. But while we're waiting, I think we're going to go to, go ahead with the memorandum of agreement that we are going to be voting on today. But Dr. Daley, if you want to maybe do a quick little overview of the content of the memorandum?
Sure. So the memorandum speaks to several different sections. We worked collaboratively on developing this. We talked about the daily schedule. And as we know, we've allowed for some time for teacher collaboration. We have maximized the number of minutes we have on learning, and certainly looked at all of those different elements of the schedule to make sure that we're clear on what's needed for this year, and some of those smaller details as well about the way things will work this year with Siphon, the way things are paid. We talked about health and safety and all of the details around providing a PPE, who's responsible, what's being provided to folks. The district is making all kinds of accommodations that are reasonable when requested, but also providing updated supplies for everyone, and also the HVAC upgrades and maintenance that we discussed previously. So that's what's in that section. We talked a lot about our collaboration and leadership, giving those periods of time for teachers to collaborate, and also supporting our curriculum coordinators who are leading our district in the curriculum and assessment at every school and at every grade level. A lot of time spent on the lease of absence and making sure that we are in accordance with everything under the law, also coming up with some reasonable solutions to folks when they do test positive or when they do need to quarantine, and make sure that that's fair and equitable. And I do see what's been agreed to at this level with our largest union being reflected in the conversations we've had with all of our larger units, and it's been a great template to be able to use with those groups as well. Specific discussion around remote instruction. Obviously, when we're in hybrid, there's going to be a component of that that's remote for students that are home. If we were to at some point need to move to full remote, there'd be some further discussion about what that would look like, it would be a little bit different if everyone's in remote. But there's certainly expectations around live synchronous teaching. This is not going to be just giving students busy work while they're home. There will be periods throughout the day where students will be engaging with their class and with their teachers. And the professional development, we've spent a lot of time on this week, focuses on the question of how do we do that and how do we do that well? The next section is about educator evaluation. We certainly are still proceeding with educator evaluation. For those teachers, in their first three years, they're still going to follow the system and fall and receive a modified feedback, but they still will get that yearly feedback twice a year, a formative and a summative. Professional teachers are going to take on two goals at the top level, one about how do we do this hybrid education well, and one about social justice and how we can explore all the different aspects of social justice across the district. And by being all on the same two goals and really having that focus, I think it's going to allow us to continue with this report process, but also continue to move forward in a challenging year. And then some very specific ideas around what we do with COVID-19, how people report symptoms, and the like. So it's a great document. I do recommend that we move forward. It was a great process. I think we have a very, very good agreement here to vote on tonight.
Excellent. Any questions from the committee? Anything we missed, Mr. Kane? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the NREA memorandum of agreement?
I would like to move that the committee vote to approve the memorandum of agreement between the North Reading School Committee and schools and the NREA.
My second.
Okay, any discussion? I guess we'll still do a roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. After five zero, unanimous. Thank you, everybody, for all those hard work on this. Okay, we'll move on, we'll go back to the athletics. We have Mr. Johnson here and Mr. LaPret for this as well.
Okay, real quick, thanks, everybody. So, well done. So have a lovely night.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter. Thanks to all the folks from the NREA for the work on us.
I'll pass it on. Thank you.
And I know that Chibi and Sophia, oh, Sophia's still here, Chibi did that, I believe. Thank you, folks. Students, it's great to hear from you guys all.
People are on the other side.
High school sports, you know, it's something we're trying to get back, you know, March 11th. If you can remember what you were doing on March 11th, I'll never forget. I was in the Boston Garden with the girls' basketball team, and we all know what March 12 was. So trying to get things back. This very first slide right here really has, like, dates in the timeline. My COVID task force began meeting May 21st, met pretty much weekly for about 12 weeks, obviously Governor Baker. Obviously, Governor Baker and the Massachusetts Executive Office, Energy and Environmental Affairs chimed in as well, along with other entities around youth and adult amateur sports activities. Phase three Step One expansion was amended on August 13th and effective on August 17th. Joint guidance of modified sport seasons, the MIAA and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education voted this in on August 18th. So there's been a lot of people kind of coming together to try and see how this can work in a very effective, safe way, and a lot of people did chime in. And I think right now, if you go and look at what they, they're proposing, in a good way, high school sports this year gets a fourth season. What they're going to do is take the fall season and beginning on September 18th and November 20th, boys' and girls' soccer, boys' cross-country, field hockey, and golf will be participating. They're going to do what's called a wave season, and that's going to be after your traditional winter season. And that's when they're going to be doing football, ball cheering, and volleyball, which is going to be February 22nd to April 25th. The traditional winter season will be the same, from the Monday after Thanksgiving to February 21st, and the spring season will be April 26th to July 3rd. These are really tight timelines, a lot because the MIAA is not going to be doing postseason tournaments this year. So really, all this is going to be is teams playing for league championships in some way. So practice, in theory, begins September 18th. It'll be a K-Band League schedule only, 10 or 11 teams. There's a lot of teams in the K-Band League doing what we're doing right now, going for a school committee to get some votes. I know I think Rockford and, might have been Triton, I think, did last night, and some other ones, you know, tonight is more going on here. So the games start on September 28th. That gives you about 10 days of preseason. Hopefully, maybe with like a little bit of a mini K-Band League tournament at the end, all coaches that are affected by MIAA modifications or their respective sports, just about every sport met and modified this, everything from field hockey going to seven-v-seven instead of the conventional, you know, 10 against 10 with a goalie, things like soccer, no heading the ball, no throw-ins, you know, there's a lot of things like that. So it's going to be very different, but I think the kids will embrace it, be able to get back on there. Obviously, wearing masks, social distancing, in terms of warming up and things like that. Obviously, when you're playing, you're going to get a little bit closer, but they do have the, wearing the mask during the games as well. So protocols that we talked about, several AD meetings from mid-August to as recent as just a couple of days ago. This is a tough one at the very beginning, no spectators or fans allowed. That's something that we thought was just a way that we could really minimize the tracing of who's actually there. One thing that we're allowed to do with no football and no volleyball and cheerleading is space out the games, where soccer can be on a Wednesday and a Saturday, field hockey can be on a Tuesday and a Thursday. You know, golf is off-campus anyway, but it's whenever you can really get the course, and cross-country is going to be either a Wednesday or Saturday. So you really know who's on your campus and who's traveling off your campus, and that's , you know, I think a pretty good thing to know. Sometimes we have, you know, four or five sports and seven or eight levels playing at the same time all over the place. So I think that's something that's, is going to be okay. Restaurant facilities, the one that's connected to the concession stand will be open. The locker rooms will not be accessible. Teams will come and be ready to play. Students will come to school ready to play and practice. That might sound a little extreme, but without football, you're not coming in your shoulder pads at home. But that happens more than you'd think. There's a lot of spirit days here and kids come dressed like that. So I think for what the kids are going to get out of it, that's kind of a small concession. Students that are learning remotely, then they can find their own transportation. And games are going to start probably a little bit later. I think we're looking at probably the 4:30 starts instead of the traditional 3:45 or four o'clock, just to give teams a little more time to travel. We talked about taking our athletic trainer and doing a tent location down by the field, open, with harrowing again. Bathroom is visible at all times, social distancing enforced at all times adhering to the MIAA protocols. And basically, every home team will have a protocol they can give to everybody in the league. This is where you, this is how you come in, this is how you cross the field, this is, you know, all those protocols, and this is, you know, where the bathrooms are. We talked a little bit about possibly, you know, you're streaming the games, the video on the game, so they can be on and parents can watch them, but, and we also talked about, not on the slide, but a senior night, you know, maybe we do that at the very beginning. So, you know, parents get that right off the bat, and we'll find a way to make that This is a, okay, well, I jumped a little ahead of myself right there, but obviously no spectators or fans allowed at games. What's it, live streaming options and, you know, even when you travel to a game, you have that option, you know, getting it on your computer, things like that, to like stream the game. This one right here, working with Mike on this one, we're looking to, from September 18th to September 30th. Right now, on Family ID, they signed up and we checked their physicals. Usually, there's a payment that goes with that too, but we held off on that, not know really where we're going to go. We didn't want to collect a lot of money and refund it. So we're going to have that window of about two weeks for the payment window, and we're going to collect the U, the Fall Two during that time, for football, volleyball, and ball cheering. That'll be in that wave season after the winter season. If for some reason something does happen, we will have communication with parents upfront, you know, when they write the checks, that if something happens, kind of a sliding scale of refund. By October 9th, you get 50% back, you know, before November 1st, 25% back, and after November 1st, you pretty much got, pretty much full season, if that's what you really can do. Same with coaches' stipends, you know, making sure that they understand right from bad if something happens, this is really what you're going to be able to receive. And in terms of bus transportation, obviously, the season's not as long, so we have less buses, but there are times where because of the Department of Education recommendations, 23, 25 on a bus. So probably teams like soccer, cross-country, have to take two buses, varsity and JV, or boys and girls, whatever you want to do. So that'll be something that will have to work out, but North Right Transportation is, they already have our schedule and they're more than able to fulfill that. I think that's, I think that takes it to that. You know, there's a...
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We have a question.
As the, Kelly, you talked about if a team is, has to suspend play for a couple of weeks, how, what's that re-entry look like? Will they be able to participate in that, as you say, whatever sort of league-level tournament that they put together? What are some of those protocols?
I think right now, the schedule is a schedule. If something happens and you can't play that game, you just move on. I think, I think rescheduling games is something that we will not be doing. If a team, this is a week or two of the season for whatever reason, and that adjuster sees the tournament possibly at the end of the year, we'll work that out at the end.
If we're, if a, if a school is in full remote, are they allowed to participate or not?
I understand they are.
Other question.
Just to clarify, if the school is in full remote because their town is in the red, is there a different scenario there, or is it just...
Well, I don't want to say something that's incorrect right now, but I, it's, just because you're remote doesn't mean you can't participate. Like, you know, Manchester Essex is going to be fully remote, and they are going to have athletics. So, you know, as an example, the red piece of it, I know you talked a little bit about, Dr. Daly, about kind of depends on, you know, where those cases are and how do they really affect the school system. So there's a little bit of a gray area to the red factor with that.
Great. Now, this, if you start, but the, what the state has said is if you start the, if you start the school, you're in remote because you were in the red, you cannot participate in the fall. That's what's said and decided for some of these towns. For towns that are starting in full remote because of their decision to start in full remote, but it's not due to, due to positivity outbreak in the town, they are allowed to participate. So if a town has to go to red, but there's still, there's still possibility that there may be some question around whether that town is able to participate, whether they're able to come into the school. So there's, there's some discussion about that that we might see, and it's good to hear that right now, it sounds like the kids are there. We've also discussed here, just to clarify, a student choosing to be in full remote who wants to participate in sports or other outdoor activities could do so. And I think we've talked about that here, but maybe tonight, as we sort of vote to approve, we're sort of approving all of those things. I think we've informally kind of discussed it. Just to, just to further on that, we've also said that students cannot participate in outdoor academic classes. So if the phys ed class is outside during the day, they can't just come in for that and then go home. And the same for a band class during the day, but they can come to after-school activities if they're on leave. So that's just, you just can't have the cohorts mixing that much, and then, you know, it's an unfair advantage to kids that have additional transportation, all those things. I just wanted to clarify that point. But certainly for the after-school, but they would need to provide their own transportation again. So if you're home, there's not a bus to come pick you up to bring you back to campus, but they would, they would need to, they would be able to participate if they can get up.
But just to clarify again, so if you're in cohort D, you're full remote and you can participate, and if you're, and if you're in cohorts A or B and a practice or a game happens on the day that you're remote, you can also participate.
Yeah, correct. Absolutely. Everybody can do an after-school activities outdoors, no matter what cohorts they're in.
Is that well?
Do you elaborate on where the decision is made around, like, lack of spectators, social, socially distancing, like, parents being able to attend an event? Is it coming from, you know, the guidance and we're making the decision as a district to follow that guidance, or are other, and also are other towns all abiding by that same sort of theory, or is it...
This is unanimous by the K-Band League, to start with no spectators and no spectators.
Okay, so it's driven by the K-Band League?
Correct.
Okay. Trying to understand the driver.
Good question. Somebody online asked that too. I have a question. So if, could parents choose to bus their students to an away game, or do they not have that option? Like, if the football team or soccer team, if the parents wanted to bus, or wanted to drive their kids there, do they have that option or not?
Well, there have been times where, it's happened sometimes in the spring when we had the advanced placement exams, and all of a sudden, there's a game where a softball team played at Manchester Essex, but if one person can't leave until, you know, 4:30, you know, sometimes we do have parents that never let the kids run, but we have had parents run. So that's on an isolated basis, not by policy though. It's just been whatever, you know, might happen.
I just wonder if there might be a parent that doesn't want to send their kid on a bus?
Yeah, it makes sense if you're, if you're on, if you've chosen to be in cohort D, that you may not also want to do that. So we should probably think about that and allow for it if we can.
Certainly is allowed.
Yeah. I would think that we should allow an exception to be made if the parent requested that.
That's, that's, I think, should be allowed.
Yeah. Are there concerns about outdoor sports starting in February? Like, football starting on February 22nd? Are we going to keep the football field clear? I mean, is that, is that something that typically happens or not?
I think there's a, typically it does not. So it's, I think you remember a couple of years back with the Thanksgiving Day game over at Olympia, where there was a little bit of snow on the ground and on the turf. I think for right now, they're just trying to find an avenue where they can possibly play. Actually, it does affect volleyball, it's inside, cheerleading will be practicing inside. And I think we'll probably from now to February, you know, work with, you know, look at options on if something does happen. If you get a nor'easter, you know, you do what you can do. If you get a couple of inches, you do what you can do. So we might have to have a couple of different plans.
And we might, I mean, from a planning standpoint, we might need to be clearing the field if we're going to plan on playing football in February.
Football field, where, where are you from?
I don't know. We're going to have to, I mean, we're going to have to keep it.
Well, in the snow. No, but there are considerations, obviously. You could, you could run into some really serious weather that could cause one.
Maureen Doherty is just saying if we can identify ourselves when we're speaking, because she doesn't know exactly.
Fair.
That was me, Maureen, Scott. One other, I think that's, question that I can't...
Chris has it. That's a Leo. Just on that note of, of sports, we think of a small sport happening in February, are there, or should we consider putting together some sort of signs like temperatures where it's really not safe to be playing outside? We could be getting some very cold days in February.
It's true. There's, I mean, there's times in, in, I think, last double sessions last year, we had to kind of change some of the time because of, it got too hot. So obviously, you know, that might be a game day to say, I know, but I'm sure we're...
Yeah. AJ O'Leary, the high school principal. I think that the degree of communication that's happened with the K-Band League, the administrators, the ADs, to work together to, what is it, the fall season, I would expect the same approach as we look at the shoulder season, to see what, what makes sense, where are we, what's the weather pattern, what's the, what's the situation right now, you know, on February 20, you know, 23rd, and kind of work together to make it possible. It's a, it's a lot more sense to kind of say, think this can happen rather than saying we're not going to bank on anything until it's just definitely not happening.
I mean, I don't think you have a bright day in February, but I think, you know, we might be playing Saturday noon time or something like that.
Yeah, sure.
It's true. There are schools that, you know, maybe, maybe their field clearing plans are better. We're playing, you know, another school and our field wasn't playable, there was, you know, theaters getting, we just turn the buses around and play the game.
One more question. This is Scott again. The, very similar to what Diana asked. She asked about the spectators, but the masks required, is that from MIAA? Is that a Cal League rule with when playing, or...
I think it's come from both. I mean, I, I've seen it in just about every report, from, you know, the COVID Task Force to the, you know, Environmental Affairs. So I haven't, I've never seen where you don't have to wear a mask. I think they relieve it a little bit, you know, some supports when you're playing, but I think by and large, it's, this is what you need to do.
Yeah, AJ O'Leary here, Maureen. The mask language comes from that environmental energy language.
Or...
And that, that, the guideline, and how they shape which sports might fall into which category, and then kind of from there, what those other modifications would look like.
And I, I would just say, Scott again, as a former defender in soccer, I feel very bad about these rules because you can't have the ball, you can't shoulder tackle, you can't fly tackle. There might be a lot of goals scored this year.
It certainly is a different game.
Hey, do we have any other questions? So do we have, so the motion is just to approve the athletic plan for the fall or for the year?
I would say to approve the, you know, to approve the plan at this stage, what's been presented. I want to thank Mr. LaPret, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Kyle. We've worked, you know, very hard on this, they've worked especially very hard, attended a lot of meetings to come up with this. It's a great solution. What I like about this solution is, is giving kids opportunity, and things might happen, you know, snow might happen, COVID, you know, different things, but we, it's, there's a promise of a season for kids getting out on the field, for doing some of those traditional things. It's going to look different, but kids are going to still have more opportunities for those experiences than if we just said it's too hard. People put a lot of time into doing this, and I want to thank you for that. I think the kids are very, very excited about anything that gets them on the field. If we learned anything from the spring, it's just, you know, we want to be out there with our friends and do these, and have those memories on the field. So I think that's great. I, just my opinion, I would definitely support anything that gets us moving forward. I think it could be done safely. I think with these precautions, we certainly can do it safely, and I think it would be great to have that support.
Yeah, I agree. And Scott again, I think, I think athletics is an important part of education overall. I mean, I just think educating the whole person and I think it's, you know, a critical part. I think a lot of us, when we think back to high school, sports was a, was an important part of everything. And so I think it's good that we can try something, and like everything, not going to be perfect, and I'm sure there'll be people that say we shouldn't play at all, and some people that say we should be playing with no restrictions, but, you know, if people are complaining on both sides, we've probably found a fair middle ground, so. Okay, so if we have a motion to accept the athletic plan for school year?
I'll move that the committee vote to accept the athletic plan. I'll move that the committee vote to accept the athletic plan for the year as presented.
Um, Janine with the second. We'll do a roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Diana, aye as well, past the five zero unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. We have kids at that. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Sophia. Okay, school committee evaluation, we're going to move to. I guess that's continued business.
Sure. I kept this on the agenda because it was discussed a little bit last time in case there was any more development. I did speak to Mr. McGowan about this and I don't believe there's an item tonight to be discussed. Um, we will continue in the future agenda to speak about the goals for the 2021 year and, and discuss that a little bit more as well as the process. But I kept this as an item, but I don't believe it's going to be discussed tonight.
Okay, pass over that. Move on to October town meeting, school capital request. Mr. Connolly?
Thank you, this is Michael Connolly, Department. So this was, uh, quite something agenda this evening. We really want to do at this point is just solicit feedback of where the committee is in terms of the capital projects that were deferred last June. Um, collectively with both school and town administration, uh, select board and school committee that really felt at the time, what was happening, only the most pertinent projects forward onto the June twenty ninth town meeting. Um, Michael Gervardo, uh, town administrator, reached out to Dr. Daly and myself recently. He said that they, the select board also, um, was going to kind of discuss this, solicit feedback to see if some of the town projects would make sense to try to place those on the October town meetings. So it felt appropriate for us to do the same. Um, so what I included in your package, just so you had the information, was the original, um, capital improvement committee presentation that, uh, John Kelly, uh, the chair of that committee, presented to the select board in June, for the June town meeting. It's a two, it's kind of a two page memo, um, that got recorded. And then I also, um, included in your package, a list of items. Again, there was over six, six point five million dollars worth of total items. Um, and this is the original ranking by the capital improvement plan that made back in the spring. And, um, Mr. Kelly's memo references that, you know, many of these were deferred. Some of the more pertinent projects moved forward. Um, to, um, jog in memory, we, we did receive approval at the June town meeting for the replacement of our school department, um, pickup truck, pickup vehicle, uh, the DPW pickup vehicle, um, which is about, um, midway down the arm of the woods. So that, that is current, that's happening, we need to receive that vehicle. Um, but from our, from, I think the administration's perspective, we think there's other sort of pertinent capital projects here that are worthy of consideration. Um, number one on this list is the, the hood handicap accessible lift, which has sort of reached its end of its useful life or been able to kind of do some maintenance repairs to keep that going and passed inspection this summer. Um, but we know it's getting to the end of its date. Uh, also the technology, um, instructional equipment that we feel is very important. And then again, the HVAC upgrade at the little school, uh, as well. And that, that was particularly to address, um, one particular ring of that building. Um, it was to address heat, the, the, bringing that, the ability for that, that room to reach temperature in the winter month up to the, up to the adequate level. So, um, certainly something that if were to be approved at the October town meeting, we feel like we could probably get that done before the, the winter month. So, um, I think this is going to be a topic of discussion. In fact, tomorrow's finance planning meeting at eight AM. So I think what we want to do is just solicit feedback and have a discussion about how the committee is feeling as a whole on these. I know there's still uncertainty with the budget and so forth. But I think we're glad that we feel like we're sort of approaching extent still. Um, but we want to be able to take the feedback from the committee till, like tomorrow's finance planning. We just kind of wanted to hold where the committee is at. I think from the administration's perspective, we feel that there are going to be some town projects going forward. We feel that, that there are a couple of projects here that got raised pretty high on the list, as you can see. And we would want those to be there, um, for us and, you know, the hood school lift, the technology certainly and the HVAC.
Thank you. Okay, comments? Dr. Daly?
Dr. I just wanted to say, uh, to clarify too, that the grant that I spoke about earlier with the technology, um, that really doesn't change the, the need for these devices. It's, it's really different devices. The technology's been used to support the expansion of our one to one with the younger grades. And a lot of those devices are older as well. Um, and a lot of those devices are the ones that we did have in our carts in our schools that do need to be replaced. So this is really about replacement. We also have teacher laptops that are ten years old, um, and, and other classroom devices. So I just want to be clear that, um, the, the devices that we're getting through the grants for the COVID is not the same as what we're requesting through capital, just to make that happen. Great, great clarification.
Well, I, this is Scott, I'll, I'll start with saying, I mean, I, I think in this day and age, I would start with health and safety as a priority. Um, handicap list obviously was the highest ranked project that wasn't funded, I believe. And I think that's important. And I think HVAC at the little school. I mean, I think if, the issue, if I recall, was that it's not warm enough in the building. And now we're going to have to keep all the windows in the buildings open. So if there's already an issue about not having heat in the building and we're going to have all the windows open in the winter, then I just imagine that it's going to be a bigger issue and we shouldn't be sending our kids to school in winter coats because, you know, there's no heating in the, in the building. And so I would, I would probably prioritize those two above the other. I'm not saying that we shouldn't argue for, you know, or advocate for technology as well. Especially if windows are going to be open, I think we have to really address heating issues in, in an elementary building. Other comments?
Uh, Chris? This is, Chris, uh, I mean, I'll, I'll agree with you completely in the sense that, uh, everything on this list is important, but access and safety have to come first, particularly this year.
Diana?
I completely, I think I completely agree that access be prioritized the way it should be prioritized.
Oh, come on.
Janine?
If, if you prioritize, prioritize the heating, then they won't be able to complain when they're fifty years old saying, I had to walk into school with the clothes and shoes all the time. No, I, I, what you said makes a, a lot of sense. So yes, I would venture to put those two up top.
Rich?
Well, I think we should take off now. Yeah, no, I think, uh, I think we, I think what you said makes sense.
I'd like to add, Janine, that everybody going to the school this year is going to be able to play fifty years from now.
They've got their story on.
Yeah.
They've got their story on.
Okay, so do we need a vote on this or?
I think, um, I think that, I think we just want to look at the feedback this evening and, and I think we take, and that goes with that, that tomorrow's meeting that certainly the, the health and safety, well being of, of the staff, students, for those two projects. I would, I would agree, I think those should be the top priorities and be a big part of the compensation for any type of capital projects for school and municipal townwide that, that need to go to the, to the warrant. So I, I think that's good feedback, I think that goes tomorrow.
Yeah, and just, this is Rich, and just to, just to, you know, I, I think the argument for the, for the technology needs is, is important because you do need to support, you know, the, all the stuff, all the equipment that we refine and, and all the, and, and certainly teacher laptops that are ten years old seems pretty extreme. Um, so if we can squeeze that on the list as well, that's great, but the priorities, of course.
Right, I will also say, this is Scott again, I think the, the little school paving project was one of my pet projects as well because I think it's, it's a mess over there in the morning. But again, if we're prioritizing health and safety, I think, you know, warm buildings, you know, access is important. And then with the technology, I think even there, I would prioritize more in teacher laptops over maybe in-person smart boards if they're not going to be being used for the hybrid plan. I don't know. Like if we're going to be doing things on, you know, laptops, things like that, I think, I think that would be something where maybe we can even refine a little bit what we need specifically for technology. If there's things that are going to be needed more now so for the hybrid approach, then something like a, a smart board in a classroom probably isn't going to be utilized as much, but teacher laptops might be. And so I think that's something that we could maybe bring up to finance planning is, uh, and anything that would be more used, because in general, when we voted on this before, it, it wasn't assuming, you know, we're doing a hybrid plan. And so there's things that aren't being funded any other way. I think those are the items that we should bring out.
Great.
Okay. I think that's it for that. Routine matters, we have minutes. This is Embriana, would you like to lead us in the minutes?
Yes, let me just pull up, um. All right, for the executive session minutes of August twenty fourth, um, I make the motion to accept as written.
This is Rich, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Any issues with that?
I didn't.
Okay. Roll call vote, Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, past the five zero unanimous. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to accept the open session minutes written for August twenty fourth, uh, as, sorry, as written.
Call second.
Rich? Any discussion on this? Okay, roll call vote again, Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, past the five zero. Thank you very much. That all we have for minutes?
That is.
Thank you, Ed. Budget update, Mr. Connolly?
Uh, there's not, no budget update this evening. Um, we'll do that next, next meeting. And then Dr. Bailey will certainly give an update on where we stand earlier with, um, the status of some of our, our, our grant funding and available, uh, federal funds for reopening COVID related expenses. Um, I think we're, we're working really hard to, to leverage those available funds as much as possible. And, um, with the funding on the CARES Act, it's been, you know, the change that municipal side and the town. Um, I'm really confident that we've been working hard, Elizabeth Work and Michael Gervardo, to, to make a rolling of reimbursed expenses, um, that the town is already conceding, both going back to fiscal year twenty and now expenses, um, that occurred through July, July hogging. So the focus of those debt funding right now is really, uh, PPE, PPE, uh, equipment that was needed, um, additional cleaning supply and potential additional cleaning contracted services that, that has been a need. Um, so that, that's a focus there. And then we're working to do federal funding for many of the areas, well, uh, Dr. Bailey wrote earlier. It's been a good process and, um, certainly there'll be a, a much more detailed update to come after, after the opening.
So my, my only question, and I don't feel like I'm, I'm, uh, this is Scott, by the way, I don't feel like I'm, uh, surprising you, is I think I had asked about buses. And I'm just worried about the busing budget for this year. And I don't know if you have anything to share because my concern is I, obviously we're going to have fewer people, students on each bus. We're going to have fewer people that are taking the bus, but the same number of buses. And so how much more are we going to be eating into our budget to cover that? And are we going to use up all of the bus, the overflow that we have in that, in that fund or not? And, and I would love to not do that because my worry is next year, we're going to be doing a new bus contract. And if the fees go up next year, usually that, that extra fund, those funds can be used to maybe offset a little bit of the cost increase or spread it over a couple of years. Can you talk a little bit about where we're at in the busing costs for next year?
Yes, absolutely, this is Michael Connolly. Uh, so this is a very good question, and I would say it continues to be certainly at the level of thirty of, um, in, in many of our special revenue accounts. But I think the good news that I can speak to that I'm confident in is we've been fortunately relatively conservative over the last few years with our revenue projection, which is what we have, um, offsetted our general fund budget with. So, and we've also, uh, certainly in the end of fiscal year twenty, in the end of the last, uh, previous fiscal year, was able to, to close out the fiscal year, maybe use more general funds dollars opposed to some of the public account dollars into simulating the, the bus transportation account for final invoices in the year, maybe in June, that certainly helped us achieve a higher carryover balance. So I think at this point, um, I'm, I'm really confident that, uh, we're not certainly going to complete the reserves in that account. We're going to do the, uh, projected to use a fair amount of that this year. But we, we have that very healthy balance that we built up. And, um, with some of the adjustments we made with savings that were achieved last fiscal year by reducing utility costs and reducing spending, there's a lot of savings that we achieved always sort of helped some of these special revenue accounts, busing being one of them because of the high level of uncertainty that we knew we were facing, um, in fiscal twenty one. Certainly busing, even full day tipping, our tuition, uh, revenue, um, athletic revolving revenue, so food service revenue. So we, we were able to leverage and carry over much higher balances by, by expanding at a high level of savings over the final quarter of last, last fiscal year. And, uh, we really closed out that year, um, in a, in solid financial standing that increased some of these reserves because of the uncertainty. We were clear by the planning team, focused the town, that, that was our approach. Um, so I'm, I'm confident that we're going to have to use a fair amount of those reserves because our, our revenue this year, based on the ridership, is going to be down by about two hundred thousand dollars. And then we're going to kind of see what, you know, how, how far do we go. And is, to be fair, there, a need to issue maybe some refunds potentially if we did last year. So that's what's uncertain still. Um, but I think we're still going to have, um, a balance that finishes this, with, with prior years, maybe two or three years ago, that's still going to allow us to meet a level of offset, which is about three hundred and fifty thousand or so that we've always counted on. But I don't think that right now that we'll see that funding cliff or they will be need to have to shift special revenue offsets to a general fund that will subsequently impact significantly the fiscal year twenty two budget. That makes sense.
Thank you. And my, my only other question is, or I guess commented, or I guess the question is, and this is Scott again, is the whole LED project complete in all the schools now?
So it's a great question. It's not quite complete. Um, so the, uh, the bachelor school is complete, the little school is complete. They are working very hard right now to complete the middle school and the high school. Um, just before the start of the school year, the students expect to complete that school next Tuesday, Wednesday, this, this building. Uh, and then they will move to the hood school, so the hood school they have not done. Um, but they do expect once the, the attrition moves from this building, um, that they'll work in the evening and be able to complete the hood school in about a week. So I think we're looking, we're still, we're a little behind schedule, uh, but I think we're looking certainly by the, um, you know, mid, mid-September to maybe the, you know, a few days into the school year with students, um, the project was to be completed.
Cool. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Connolly? Mr. Connolly? Dr. Daly, anything else happening?
At this time?
Any business donations?
Uh, yes, there is one, this is there.
Mr. Connolly?
So I will move that the committee vote to accept with thanks, uh, uh, the gratitude of donation of PPE products worth five hundred dollars from Greg Embriano's, uh, TBRE Inc. to benefit North Reading School students and staff. I'll second. This is Chris.
Any discussion?
Need to go first.
Okay. Um, roll call vote, Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, five zero unanimous, thank you.
Embriano's on the line. Thank you.
He's really not my cousin, but obviously he's a lady.
Subcommittee update, we have a finance planning team meeting tomorrow. I guess we can't report on that. Um.
Do you think I don't know for that?
That, I don't know if you have yet, yeah. Well, and then administrative report?
At this time, at this time, I will be going to a board health meeting soon. And we're going to discuss some of the protocols for your.
Correspondence?
Not at this time.
Okay. Future business, we have, and, and the only thing I'll comment on the schedule, somebody asked me if this was an emergency meeting because it's on a Thursday night. We're going to try occasionally to do some Thursday night meetings because I think Monday evening makes it a very long week for Dr. Daly and, uh, Mr. Connolly. So, uh, that's why we're meeting on a Thursday night this week. Um, future meetings, September twenty fourth, school committee meeting and October fifth, um, as well. I imagine we'll be doing the same as we are right now where the committee will be in person and it will be hybrid from, or it'll be, uh, remote, everybody else.
So I'm just roughly, I had a question, is this setup, Dr. Daly, similar to what a synchronous classroom might be experiencing? Yeah, yeah, okay, so that's, that's interesting. It seemed to work pretty well. It seemed to work pretty well, everyone.
Yeah, this is, this is, I mean, it is sort of living out the model, right? So we're, we're doing some interaction, there's, there's interaction two-way with the chat, we're calling on people that can speak here. And we did buy some additional equipment in our classrooms, some, some microphones, so it's not just a computer mic for the teacher, they can pick up the classroom sound, so we're not requiring that teachers go live from their classrooms with the whole class, but it's certainly a possibility. I think it, certainly at the secondary level, it might be more of a possibility, but yeah, this is how it could work. Worked well tonight as this meeting, so.
Thanks. Okay.
The, the next meeting is on Thursday as well, at least one week into school, we felt that that was just a good time to have a second meeting, after school started, both cohorts will have been in, and then we return to the Mondays on October fifth.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to dismiss.
We'll make a motion.
Adjourn.
So there you go, thank you, adjourn. Do adjourn.
Second? I'll second.
Second, any discussion? Okay, I'll look at several, the roll call vote, Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, five zero, thank you very much, everyone.